Can you say it's me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm done.
Thanks.
I expect this meeting.
Always be here.
We want to show you just the time. Um, well, it seems definitely because COVID is interrupting everything. And in first year, we were here in empty offices. So, yeah.
Maybe so, yeah, we know. I was like, oh, okay. Okay, so. Yeah. Maybe so, yeah, we know. I was like, oh, okay. It's like, we didn't have. Yeah, okay, so.
Okay.
Oh, do you have any to say? No, I have no comments. It's probably.
Yeah. This is for them?
No, we can understand. No, no, no. It's more.
All right. Right, as we're getting settled, I'll start the meeting at seven o'clock on January 3rd. And before we start talking about our presentation, I would like to see if there's any public input. All right. Seeing none. I did have some questions. We had a lot of people ask us about any COVID updates and asking, I don't know what's that now? Is there anything we care to discuss in public cases?
Sure. So, not much to add beyond my message yesterday, which is cases are certainly localized in our schools, in our state, et cetera. We're watching it very carefully. We get a number of cases today. What's interesting is the cases are really grouped inside of families. So, we're seeing, whereas in the past, we've seen one person in a family with an active case and other people having quarantine, now we're actually seeing the whole family get COVID at the exact same time. That is uniquely different from what we experienced in the past. So, our numbers are large, but the number of families is actually pretty consistent with where it's been. But we're still watching it. We have no plans at this point to change our mitigation measures, strategies, or status level. This board adopted a reentry plan that we're sticking to, and our measures are staying consistent with those. And so, our nurses are working very diligently to keep track of everything, but as of right now, there's really no further amendments.
Thank you. A lot of questions.
Lots of questions.
Lots of questions. Okay. So, my computer's not actually yet, so I'll let Amy, she'll end up pulling up the presentation for us. Okay. One thing I'd like to ask and see what people's opinions are, there was a presentation I just set up with everybody that's with me. We're getting draft. And I hope everyone had a chance to look at it. But regarding the public presentation in January and delivered in February, do you feel that they should be, one, basically the same presentation, the same amount of detail, which people have a chance to think about between January and February? Or do you feel there should be two separate sorts of presentations? Anyone have a question?
I thought, because I've done this before.
Yes.
So, public hearings required by law, obviously, just more than like. You did not speak about any warrant articles. You still comply with the law, not taking to that. Took the rule of focus on the budget. But this, which worked well for us for a thousand years, maybe two thousand years, has been focusing on the numbers at this meeting, and then going into a larger discussion about the theory behind the numbers and school operations and successes and failures, long stories about why, why we need things. Because that liberty people have power to change things. The interest of townspeople, not in Sahigan, in the Embers Town, Sahigan, is spent on numbers.
Okay. So, maybe not go into deep explanations as much, but at least.
Use the budget, use the why, use the why. There's Amy sensitive.
Yeah.
Not in super general principle or school, et cetera.
So, the whole introduction and everything that happened. Anyone else? On the other?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, and Steve just, if you look at deliberative, it has the full enchilada, so to speak, right? It has everything in there. And then for the public meetings, it's a scaled version of it. So, it's just more fact-based than a middle-up.
Yeah. Okay. So, I was trying to keep them somewhat similar. Maybe we can have a similar presentation, but you get into the detail of the narrative might something. Maybe we'll try and do one sort of presentation with the detailed narrative.
So, in the past, every slide will use a public hearing as well as. Add more.
All right. So, as we get into this, Amy called today, and there are two changes, and we're gonna need to do another round of voting. One of the changes is to just the default budget, because the bus contract, it does not call an increase in the bus. Contract does not call a default. We had accidentally left the fuel cap surcharge in the default, which we can't do. So, that's a $10,000? Yeah, that $10,000 that needs to be removed from the default. So, we'll need to move forward the, or vote on the warrant article again. And then the second change is the wording on the new, what do we call it? Capital, it's the science lab renovation fund. Yes. So, we had to change it to a capital reserve fund instead of a.
Exemplary trust.
Exemplary trust fund.
Yep.
To do it legally correct, as Steve had made, had questioned it and handled it. So, thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it.
I just wanted to give you.
They, yeah, they probably would have been legal, but it's, it's better suited as a capital reserve. So, I consulted legal as well as the trustee of trust funds and legal agreement.
Is one of them, you can invest more aggressively than the other, since that's my recollection of the difference between the two funds?
I believe so. There are two different areas, and so, there are some differences. They're, they act relatively the same, but to be most correct, this would, having as capital reserve is advice.
And does anyone know that's not the one that could be invested more, or more aggressively? Does anyone recall? Which name or which?
I.
Do you remember? Remember, keen on that detail back in the summer.
That could have been years ago.
If I, if I remember correctly, and I, I'm not using. One, I'm trying to point out. The small trust fund is designed to invest funds and then spend the interest income to retain capital. So, the only way we can get our money out of it is by dissolving that fund in the end. Capital reserve fund is more like a service account, but by the end, you get money out of it anytime you want. So, the question is, do you have to treat it more like cash and not like.
For this project, that makes sense.
Yeah. So, for instance, if we put it in this fund, you're saying that you can take the money out anytime? So, if, if someone says, we'd like to give you a half the price science lab, would you be like, thank you, and we just buy the science lab?
Yeah. I'm looking to God's ears.
So, I'm thinking, in essence of time, why don't we vote on those two changes, so that we can just talk about the presentation and move on? Yes, Steve?
I will move to motion.
Yes.
To amend the operating budget to an operating amount of $20,314,500, and default amount of $19,807,800.
Thank you. I have a second, ten seconds. And since we're all here, we can just vote those in favor of the motion. And those against? One against. Okay. The science lab renovation fund. So, we're gonna change this to a capital reserve fund. So, we'll need a motion to move this one forward.
I'll make the motion.
John makes the motion to, for the science lab renovation to become a capital reserve fund. There a second?
I'll second.
Four seconds. Those in favor? Any other votes? Okay. Now we can back to you. Okay. So, we're gonna put up the portrait of graduate. Is it, is it just a, maybe a brief introduction of what is important to what this means? As a keeper, I think. And then, where are we going into? So, at least, I think the summary, just the brief overview. Pretty basic, straightforward.
We're good to stop there on the portrait of graduate. It makes sense. If there's more to it, doesn't necessarily mean more slides, but.
No.
Isn't?
Well, we're gonna talk about who wants to pick up what part to discuss.
Well, okay, that's fine, but where does the, hey, we've been working on this strategic vision for a number of years now. Here's what we've done, here's where we are on our path, this budget that you're about to hear connects with that in all the ways that you'll learn about. Ties into portrait of graduate. So, I don't know if there's a slide needed for that, or if that's just somebody talking about it.
So, the str- strategic vision?
There's some, yeah, something, like, it's a persuasive case, it's not like you have a bunch of money. It's like, yes, a bunch of money.
So, that's a good idea.
Where it came from, thinking about this.
So, I just look to. So, I don't know if you've watched the moving around, or if you want to add to this.
Yeah, I think, I think if we just move that, the major theme budget, if not, out, the portrait of graduate.
Taking the bias to have everything.
Big contracts?
Yes.
Our act, our, our focus contracts?
Yeah.
Numbers.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
See, I do, I do. I thought it was just big.
Not at all. And that's part of like the verbiage versus what you see on the slide, or something. So, it's a good idea to move that.
Part of it, you're trying to tell a story. And the numbers really aren't in context unless you're really saying.
Why are you putting those numbers in there in the first place? You don't understand that.
Yeah, I also had that on another slide too, but when we get to it.
Okay.
It kind of a similar thing.
Okay. So, okay, so we'll talk about the major themes and not ties in the portrait of graduate. So, I guess it was driving our budget. All right. And then we can go to the numbers. Go to the.
Do you want my, do you have any comments about the current slides you want to move?
Um, I think if it's a major thing that needs to be discussed, yes. I'm just trying to keep this going, because I know a couple of people have to leave, so. If it's a little bit. So, yeah, so if something needs to be changed, or if you think there's a bigger overall.
No, no, they're, they're like, better phrasing.
So, there's various ways that I'm happy to communicate with you all. You can put comments in here, you can put those notes on the bottom, you can comment, you can slap anything, whatever you want. So, that's, yes.
Put your own bets.
So, yeah, just send them along, and I'll make, make edits. Okay, so Steve, yours are just small, flow over you. Steve, yes.
Hey, clear. Can you tell you about this?
Yeah.
I'll discuss something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Okay. All right. So, we're gonna, so again, the operating budget. The warrant article, that is, the warrant article actually need to read this. I don't think we normally read it at moments here, front of mind, right? No, that's a deliberative.
Oh, deliberate.
Yes.
Providing copies of the draft warrant, and some people can reach closer. We don't have to read them.
Yes. Okay. So, we'll just move that, jump to the next slide. So, this is where we can say, this is what always, to me, I don't, I always, I wonder whether this needs to come up front or go more towards the end? Because unless we talk about the whole thing, because otherwise, you're talking about the, you start talking about the operating budget, and you have the other warrant articles, but people aren't gonna hear about those till later. And this summary, I think, does better later.
It's classified, it's classified to a variable lead or.
Yeah. Or put it in the beginning and end, or see, that's a little too. So, we're, I mean, we're gonna put it up there saying, here are the different, different articles we're gonna be discussing, so everyone gets to see them right up front.
Beginning and end of the big script.
Put it, put it in those places, maybe? All right, so we'll, we'll leave this here as the warrant article we're gonna be discussing tonight. Here's your summary. All right.
You put it before the first warrant?
Actually.
It's already in the second warrant.
Right? That, I think that's where I'm getting, I'm thinking. What, can you go to the slide before this one? So, there's that.
It's partly part of the, it's a summary.
That's what I'm wondering, is a couple of four, we actually dive into that one, article number two.
Yes, I have a.
Yeah. Yeah. So, we'll move back, just as this is the summary, and then.
You have that in words, and you have it in the.
Yes. And then what's the, what's the one, one of that? And then what's the, what's the one, one of that? What's the, no, like That one? Cause that's
Number one's just in the budget.
Yes.
That should be just in the budget section.
Default. That's definitely Maybe that seems to go after article two. That goes, that just puts So I'm going to have to add and write and then I can change it in one time. And that that might help everybody visually.
I would say we're after
I think the ordering
She'll she'll make those changes while I Those will be
Yeah.
Could could those be in a table like
That one.
The total appropriation comparison, it has similar notes could like percent changes increases. But it's also a version fault for it else. So yes, it does.
So you want this in a table?
I'm wondering. We are. Because it It looks, it looks like the total appropriation comparison is Twenty three, that's like twenty three, that percent change. Like just a text. Still thinking to go after, yeah, we can talk about the fault.
Well, we'll go back and look through that again, make sure that Yeah, I get what you're saying. All right.
I suggest that you even
Yeah. All right, so then this is the summary by The so you can finance committee category, which I think a lot of people relate to. So I I kind of like it in this format. Any questions on this? No one have much of any issues with the ordering of it? It seems a little scattered or
Well, typically you have the largest delta curves.
Yeah, and then move it down.
Yeah. These are, these are ordered by function, like Right. The bunch of those.
Yeah.
But that doesn't make sense to me. Yes, yeah. I think for the public, we should move it around.
Yeah. The biggest delta is the smallest delta.
Yeah.
See, you know, most of it, and I think this is for the public as well. When you, I mean, the bulk is all in special ed. Okay? It's about, I don't know, I came up to you. It's about seventy three percent of the entire delta there. So which pretty much is almost out of our hands. So when you pull that out, you're really left with less than one percent.
Yeah, you're talking about administration and
Everything, everything else. Less than one percent. Three ninety four on five forty two total. Yes. Everything else sucks out to be one percent. Yeah, it's less than one percent. So to me, that's pretty darn good.
You know, the one thing we don't have in here, when I think about this, is we do not have a chart that shows anything about the people, number people.
I don't know.
As a moment, I'm telling you that we're, I'm wondering if we should draw a moment to show that it's least stable and steady. Cause that's what you're going to say, this is why you don't see a lot of changes in other categories.
Typically, the the narrative around it always three or four years behind every community. So when it dropped three or four years ago, people still say that it's dropping. Well, it's been existing before.
And we can show that now. And we can show where we know that six, seven, eight, three are going to come again. And we can show that stability. So maybe in a moment.
And I don't know if this needs to be a slide per se, but there should be student notes on the categories, why up and why down? And maybe it's, it's just what you said, a why in large. My sense is beyond our control. This is just Why is technology counting one three percent? With it's because of we're making changes trying to be Yeah, certain, certain individuals, if he's going to focus on a dollar amount, that's all they're going to care about. But at the end of the day, you have no control over seventy three percent of it. Exactly. You have no control. Right. So out of the remainder, what are we talking about? Less than one percent focus. Right. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. So one of the things that I I was going to do was just go by the finance, so you can finance the category. And kind of give a couple bullet points for each one of what was in there or what makes up that category. So we can give a quick speed to point. When we go to delivery, we can go deeper to the discussion. But I think for a public hearing, we need at least a bullet point of here's what's, you know, currently you're not seeing much of a change. Um, you know, administration, what, where's that change? That change is due mostly by We're not going to get a huge discussion about that.
Yeah, yeah. You really want to focus on the things you can control.
Correct.
And and to talk about special ed, you can talk about it all day, but it's not the changing.
Right, we can, right. We have a number of students we are aware of, we are required to
Yeah.
I have a question for Adam. What's, what's the timing of that on the Who was, where's Thomas' channel?
Amherst is from five to seven. We start at seven.
Okay, so you're
Seven and nine.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's right. I'm sorry, the mind is skeggy.
So yes, bullet points. I didn't report.
Should cover about
Yes, well
Absolutely.
We're, we're going to discuss it, but we're not going to like We're going to discuss what they do and what they are and why we think they're important. That's the discussion. We're not going to like, I was more talking about how all the discussions we've had, we're not going to delve into all the Just have the discussion about what they are, what they're going to do, why I think they're important. Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So yes, and the point is the size of presentation needed for this one. Just leave this up and walk it through. And I think those highlights towards one, one of the major examples about special education is maybe it's only up eight point six percent, oh, six percent. Because why? We invest in in-house programs to save us a ton of money. That's a narrative that we've been championing for a long time and we should find it by a year or two to extend it still true at high schools.
So my, my thought was, well, so do you think the bullet point idea and having a slide is more of a deliverer? Where you can put it out there, where you think just discuss the numbers sitting on the chart.
That's another philosophical question. I don't, some people think that the public hearing is, you get the numbers and go home. I look, I look at it more along the lines of test your delivery of your actual Really want to tell the people.
Yeah.
So then if they are there or they've watched the video, they hear the philosophy, they hear the decision making, they hear the why, not just the what.
I think
It can be violently important to go into all of it. Try to do a drive, legit drive around what the delivered. We want to deliver, look like Review, make your adjustments, find some, oh, I missed this opportunity or whatnot. And then you're ready to go. That's my view.
Yeah. I mean, I I mean
Let's say you make a multi-point series, one, seven, slide.
Right.
Three.
Yeah, okay.
As long as the speaker whoever delivering it has
Okay.
Delivered the narrative has If they can deliver it orally.
So we'll add slide Okay. Makes sense. Yep. Okay. And then All right. Okay, there's a vault. I think it's pretty straightforward, just walk through each one. Okay.
Just some suggestions to to Notice that's the overall salaries of the entire F all down overall.
Which I think is I'm always, it has a fault calculation. It goes from all the things, you don't just go operating money without operating target. That always starts with the And how the why.
Well, it's, it's actually the way it's partially through to is written.
Yeah.
Individual articles that aren't special articles become part of the operating money.
All right. And then look at the next. Although it's default deals. Speak to those. So those could be speaking points for now, but you can keep that slide. I don't, I didn't, yeah. I think those are good, when we talk default, I'm always willing to keep the default calculation up so everyone can continue to see each And just use those as speaking notes, I think is more important because otherwise people are going back and forth, you know, trying to fill the paper. Where I think I like those as speaking. Second? Yes.
I was trying to look through the presentation from last year and I didn't see, I know we have it in meetings, COVID funding related expenses. Is there a link to this presentation or is it Esser funds for this? Just to show Last year, the Esser to funds, if you want us to assign.
Certainly can, that's not, it's, it's, it's not conveying at all to your proposed budget. And it's not, it doesn't have any relevance to it because it doesn't affect last year's budget number or this year's budget number because it was all separate funding. So you certainly can, you can do whatever you want.
But there's separate money that came in this year. And what did that last extra money came in this year for?
Totals of the EO eight money is one hundred seventeen thousand. Okay. I just think it shows trust us because this is
This is what it was
We've transcribed about how instead of the federal money, I just think you're a little
It would be good.
Public relations to share and we already have information because it has five percent four in very detail.
One thing would be interesting to share along this, I think EO eight was in Brutsky order dollar, not Esser. It's actually rarely given permission to keep the previous year's unassigned fund out and repurpose it, okay, for COVID related expenses. If you remember, we took almost all of our previous year's balances, set aside for contention COVID funds, which created a spike in the tax rate and then a drop in the tax rate because we get all, almost all of that. That would be a portion of that.
That's it.
That's not the federal dollars, that's the national tax dollars that we repurpose for COVID. And then use for different taxes and give them back for nine years and
I would say it's perhaps a good one. Good to to Right place to do this with your session is like you're talking about the tax rate and how these things fit in and out of the tax rate. Okay, the good steward of money and all that stuff. But here, this is really about
You're not
This is what, this is what we One question is
Or you, the question, you even on a napkin piece of paper, name a sketch of like, wrote that slide with a microbook. But I think you have a reminder that that might help us.
I absolutely agree. Helped from last year's.
It's more just in shot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Presentation. Yeah, we did the presentation was like money that came in. What if, what, how it came, like what it was from Esser one, Esser two, whatever, what it came in and how it used it.
You need to know what to assume. We've got to find it.
So
Even better than
She has it. All right, so we'll hold on that one for delivery. But let's be prepared for that. Yep. Okay. All right, so then I added those notes to the speaker notes on the Then going from the defaults to the proposed budget, again, just we, I think we made, were there talking notes after this one too? No. Now, okay, good. So we can just talk through, you know, to say, these are the things we already present, these are all talking points. Bridge to categories.
I hate this one. I do, and I'll tell you why. Because it looks like we're, we came up with a budget based on our default budget and we added a bunch of things in.
Yeah.
That's not how we come up with a budget.
No, but we're required to walk through, aren't we? We're required to walk from the default to the actual budget.
Yeah, but then we hadn't did that already in reverse, like showing the budget, how to do the whole budget calculation.
Can you go back to the other? The FY twenty two budget, so the FY twenty
Yeah. I hear what you're saying.
Oh, I thought it was, we had to walk, you want to walk this one?
We, we can have to say a hundred and twenty million dollars which is
That's all we have, but how we're required to, all this is, is one way to demonstrate the difference between the default and the proposed.
Right.
You presented it anyway you like, but how long to see.
I was going to suggest the Okay.
That's just my opinion, so.
So
I don't think for the public you should go through it. I think that's confusing. It's Less than more.
Even if you did it, you have to use those as the exact speaking points you're using to talk about the budget and how it's over. Otherwise, it
It looks like how I did it, it had a lot of people and then and everything else was made.
Look, we've always, we've always done, this is the new difference. Slide. So but I think what you're getting to is the knockback away of presenting the first two. Hey, isn't this what we're doing separate?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking is that is there a way to say, here's the fault. Here's the differences, like the highlight the differences between the two?
Maybe
We discussed it.
Maybe the answer is the way the warrant article presents it, maybe you present the proposed budget first. Cause that's what you did. That's what you want to Or that's what you want to get support for. And then show the differences between the default after, here's the default. Yep. Yeah. I agree. Cause then that, that is true to get a budget, create a proposed budget, then you figure out the fault.
Right.
You're trying to get people's support for the proposed budget, not the default.
So
Even the
When we already have the proposed budget, so he can finance a complete As they think, for a staff to be as a And by their categories, that is the proposed budget that we're going to talk to
Yes.
And build. So
Yes.
Yes. So just get rid of the whole other slides, what you're thinking.
I just want to say, we want to expose the differences and we transparent about them. People, we talked about some of the cars, who were not so visible to the last budget and voting presentation. We want, we want to be very clear, this is, this is the first law changes. So we're not going here, we definitely got to do it with delivery.
Well, maybe, maybe there's a offer a difference suggestion. Maybe this slide should start with FY twenty two budget. Which are the difference from FY twenty two budget to FY twenty three.
Yeah.
And the fault is something
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That one.
Yes.
This is just confusing. It's like three different budgets you're looking at.
I know, and we're going to, we're going to say the same things too many different ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're got the right thing presented in your choice.
Oh, no. I started FY twenty two budget at the top and then walked through all the differences to the proposed budget. And then mentioned on the default slide, here are the things we won't be able to do with the proposed budget doesn't pass.
Yes. Yes.
Exactly.
Cause that's the wall.
That's kind of what this is.
That's what it is. This is just exposing those things that we can't do because they're not included in the ball. Right. So you would flip it.
It's It's presented
Yes. Okay. All right. Does that make sense? I think that's a good question.
I'm not playing handy with slide. She inherited from somebody
There's no tribe enough to
Maybe you just don't understand what it's like to be a board
Okay. All right, then, so that's pretty much would be it for the budget presentation. So the question I have before we move to warrant article, does anyone want to help present? And we're going to get to, we're going to get to your slides in a bit. Anyone want to help present or want to present the The budget, either all of it, part of it? Plus, I haven't wanted to walk through it. Do you want to leave that? If I do that part, people love to speak up to the other parts.
We're in charge of chairs.
Is this where I step down? This is a good opportunity for people to run.
Yeah.
Sir, we're looking at, I've got ten slides, nine
The one
A lot of the room slide.
Is that
I'm only going to have, not having board members turn up in that.
I would say, yeah, you do by certain.
I'd watch them with two board members.
One who talks about the operating budget, don't want to go through the. Yes, I'm with you, that's why I didn't know about your purpose. Or not, I mean, otherwise there's two warrant articles of the people who just step up. What you can talk about.
I don't even know why I would say that, I'm volunteer to take half of it.
Part of this? Okay, all right. We'll, we'll get together at that. In which presenter of any of these things responsible for feeling the public questions? No. They, they will, people will ask questions and if we're, if like, I can help direct if someone can answer it. If not, we look over here and we say, any suggestions?
Well, don't you have a question so after the presentation?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
So I think, you take that.
Exactly, you're not.
Just hold on to your questions, otherwise you're going to be.
Not a monster.
But I think, so I'll just say, the chair should formulate in, in her mind, who should answer the question, possibly. Because sometimes we're all sitting up there just scaring each other, saying, who going to do this?
Yeah, exactly.
Which best when the chair distributes the question.
All right, special warrant articles. The first one up is the science lab. I mean, I have, I actually have a write-up from the teachers of what this is about and what's needed and why they struggle in the classroom and where the academic struggles are, because we don't have the right space for them. But I'm more than happy to pass that off to somebody if they'd like to speak about the science lab. I do think it's interesting conditions and solutions, however. Yeah, or that, yeah, you're right, yeah. It's a multi-page. And I even have pictures.
Yeah, it's kind of a.
Couple of work points.
I mean, it can be huge, it should be.
Yes.
It can be a real show job.
Right, but this, this is really about being able to provide the proper academic environment and the teacher being able to give the full academic course. Which is driving a lot of this motivation.
Sounds like you know a lot about this stuff.
You're going to have to do a budget.
That's fine, because I have a mind towards strategic vision implementation, so it would be very easy for me, a blocking opportunity to connect our budget to that.
Okay. If you want to grab onto some of the budget and I'll take that.
That's good.
I can do that, and you want to work with Steve on the where would that cut off?
Absolutely.
Same deal, tell me where you want to start running with this question.
All right. And then the turf field replacement. Can you just do that on the sciences and one of the other?
And I added speaker notes to this. I actually was planning to present this last year before I. I think it is born.
I didn't do this last.
Yeah, John did it, so there's speaker notes from the previous presentation, so just.
So that one.
First you can do it because it's almost guaranteed it will be questions because we've got like six times.
I'm.
First of all.
The science lab.
We've talked about.
I'm sorry, I've been. No, no, I've been worrying about it since we built the.
Because it's been talked about since we've built the field.
Probably bad.
But yeah, I added the funding plan to see, you know, what's existing and then the contribution of the roles. But the likes I've.
Yeah, and what about, like you have the science lab renovation, the whole work, purposes, conditions and solutions. We did that slide last year, that was similar.
Yeah.
It's actually in pretty good shape.
Okay.
That's good.
Yep.
You know it has a life, this is a model. We expected rental fees to pay for it, but here's where we stand. Yep. And it's been such a great benefit, not just for athletics, but assemblies, all kinds of things. And also why it's important. And that's, that's one slide should be able to.
I wouldn't do. Yeah, that's, I wouldn't do that slide, I would just talk about it. Really, it's something that's seen before, summarize it, diagram. This is a great slide, again, the deliberative.
Hold on.
So you think just put up the slide instead of the warrant article, say you're two cents in the lead.
Yeah.
Although I'd like, I'd like to see the buildup though, that if you want to understand where we're getting to a certain dollar amount, I think that slide shows.
You can say that, hey, we got this, try to get that.
Maybe that's a million dollars, here's all the speaker notes that I'm on the screen there, so. Describes everything.
I just.
Okay, we can, we can just use those speaking, then from now on, but keep the slide for deliberative.
Yeah. Yeah, deliberative, we. All the needs.
And so what's the point of the public hearing? To warrant the voters of what's coming up.
Warrant the voter session.
It is, it is our last chance to, for us to change the budget on our own before the voter session. Once we post the voter session, we cannot change it anymore. Only the voters can, the voter session. Change the voters, give us their unfettered opinions one last time.
At the end of the year.
My question is.
Some of them, who would send it to the election. So post-public hearing, you cannot raise the budget at all, you can only keep it the same or lower.
But is it important to give them enough information like this in order for the public to understand? The picture that we're talking about?
That's, that's.
And that's just my thinking.
That's what the deliberative and voting is for. This is like, this is to kept them on notice of what we're talking about. Not, we don't intend to be a dialogue, deliberative is a dialogue.
Right.
Here's like, here's our thoughts, tell us your thoughts. And again, the public hearing, we finally go to a room, we say, we've heard what the public has to say, do you want to change it one last time before it gets hardened? Our discretion is.
The night of, of the year, a week later.
Yeah, yeah, because it is a tiny little window to. About two and a half weeks.
Yeah. You could, you can change, you could lower or keep it the same, but take that vote anytime until the time you have to post the warrant, the budget and the fault, which is worth one day in June.
So, okay, so. The voter wanted to watch the recording and pause on a slide and really look through the argument. Would be helpful to have the speaker notes actually on a slide. And that person that they did open the time frame could actually give feedback after the fact or before the final death.
But if we don't have a meeting, then we're like, I mean, it would have to be pretty dramatic for us to have to call an emergency meeting basically, that's why it's like, I want to make sure there's enough information given in the public hearing that people can face a question on to stick on.
I hear what you're saying, Steve. But what, what would be the problem? We're saying a lot of things, we're saying almost all the things that will be the speakers with the slide apart. What would be the harm in laying that slide as deep and high as you say those speaker notes?
So I'm a big fan of lessors board slide shows. The first slide you doubt, the second you look, the fourth slide, the hundredth one, as opposed to, oh, look, it's hour three, I'm going to slide for wonders, yay! John, John expects a level of diligence from the voters that we all hope they do. I'll give you twenty-five regulatory order direction, actually does that in the time between our public hearings and deliberative session. People are busy lives, they're not going to go through that in another way, they're probably going to ask questions. Here again, so that's my personal philosophy about this. I've done very long public hearings, I've done very short public hearings. I've just ran no difference in the votes, or comments. So with that knowledge, unfair, spend less of my time and the public's time, that's all, that is opinion, it's just opinion.
If we change it to a slide that looks like a turf field and you know you can have the football for each.
Ah, that, that I like.
And I like that, well, because that's persuasive, what's missing from these charts is anything that's actually persuasive.
How much persuasive points are in the speakers?
How much more, is everybody intended to be persuasive? Well, I'm trying, but it's not intended, it's kind of formal.
Well, I can back to very early in this, is it a ride around from deliberative or is it something completely different?
I mean, I, I go to the fact that we need to disclose the outcome, right? So the outcome is, we need to replace the turf field at approximately five hundred thousand dollars. But so no one understands why we're going to put them around eighty-five. Except if they're listening, the speaker. Or they see that.
I wasn't a speaker, then I don't want to talk.
I, I, I'm tempted to leave that in there, it just says the person speaking is the speaker notes and it's what people will see it. I don't know.
Not the other. A speaker should have the slide they want.
Yeah, totally. So. I know I'm doing the science lab, is there anyone who wants to do the turf field or do I combine both of those? You guys.
I mean, because it's combined because it's shorter. I'm at least a turf field.
Yeah, and then the last, last thing we want to talk about is the capital needs assessment funding plan. So we're not asking for money to put away right now. But this is, to me, I think, we were going to have money put away. But because of some savings issue, we don't want to ask for any money. But I think it's important for us to show that we have facilities planned. And Laura on top of it put together some slides that kind of go with the whole capital needs, that's it. So I don't know, silly, I, do you want to talk about the capital needs assessment to the public or?
Sure.
Because you have a lot of slides on the question, I want, I'm wondering if you can go through it maybe more bullet points rather than sentences. So people can see it.
Well, yeah, the government funding needs to change.
Yeah.
So we just try, we're going to make persuasive case with the speaker notes, the thing that doesn't cost anybody any money in FY twenty-three.
Well, this would be, so the question is, is this a deliberative, is this a deliberative session, what discussion? Right?
My opinion is yes, because it's not an appropriation to the warrant voters on that.
So we hold this for only the deliberative session, because we're not actually asking for money right now. But we want people to understand we are taking care of our facilities, that we have a plan and that, that plan is going to be continuing. But it's not fully public here, because my blood, you know, like.
I, I would argue if the detailed content absolutely warrants the voter session. I would also agree that, for your statements, oh, by the way, the last seven years, we had this warrant article, and there isn't one this year. Here's why.
You could voice track it.
Sorry?
Voice track it.
Yeah, so I, I. Just think of probably the out of public session, Laura, you okay to leave that out of public session?
Say something, because everyone expects.
Say something.
First question would be, where's that, that capital reserve item that you voted for?
Yeah.
You guys had a plan, where to go, so we could say, collectively. The plan exists, it's continuing, good news, we should go, we don't need any. Again, a short paragraph on why, ETLs to follow, like the deliberative. That, that, that's, that's how I think that would work best.
Well, some of the facilities discussion has to do with the capital needs assessment, but that's a, that's a separate fund than our budget for capital, or budget for facilities.
Yeah, because a lot, some of the slides you put together are just for the budget pieces.
Right, I mean, and it also gives.
Right.
Warning, heads up for facilities in the future, we may be looking for money for these items, and they may not be part of the capital needs assessment. Of replacing carpet, which is throughout the building with less of all the options. Easier to maintain.
Only, yeah. Can you go to one of Laura's, like my next slide? Because that's where it's, it's probably too much, it's definitely too much for public session, I'm not going to.
Can we sit down together, maybe?
Sure, we can, we can make different slides for.
Narrow it down, yes. Okay, why don't Laura and I work on this slide? Who have a presentation.
Yeah, I'm a big fan, I'm a real believer in the word.
Yeah, but keep it higher, yeah, okay.
Is it possible for Laura putting any pictures anywhere in this thing? The only slide I remember of that, presentation two years, because that was a room full of desks. All the slides that we watched in two different meetings, and, and it had not a lot to do with actually not advocating room full of desks. But I'm wondering with the science lab renovation especially.
It's picture.
It, it just, picture, when you go in, it just looks like an elementary school classroom, it doesn't look like a science lab at all, and then you can see the fire jets up against the cupboards and the walls.
Yes, and I have, yeah, I have some.
You have, I have some pictures, yes.
That maybe I can set.
Yeah, I put a standard sign already.
Yeah, I put a placeholder in, okay.
Well, because I think people don't understand why would this building already need to be a science class, but they're.
Three years old.
Education just changed.
Science just changed.
Oh, yeah. The one we are teaching inside, because I was ever. Bailey Cone has changed. Cone is. Against the wall. I would gas, those gas shut offs.
We fixed the gash.
Okay. So then there's just the final summary of warrant articles.
Right, I put this in here, not sure if they want to.
Oh, that's Dan.
Public hearing or not, there's a placeholder.
Oh, that's Dan, usually they don't say anything. Probably, but I'll ask, it's the same case, they want your example. It's not what I look. And then I think that's pretty much it.
You got it, you have a good chair to present that last slide on.
Yeah, the summary.
We're going to have another table as we discussed, that was fresh in that.
We were talking about.
On the executive summaries, we kind of, yes, we copied that, that early slide that shows the corporations comparison. Essentially it's cognitive and original cognitive.
Okay. Can you go? No, not that one, sorry, that one. Or such is the summary of the warrant articles. But isn't that?
Replace this with that.
That's no wonder. Yeah, we don't use this, but use that other. Okay. So that's the basic outline.
So, so slides nineteen to twenty-one, we could just go somewhere else, we're now not, don't believe them.
I'm going to leave them, I'll, I'll copy them over into deliberative draft.
So, John has like the beginning conversation about strategic vision, portrait of graduate, leading it in towards the budget, you're going to work out with Steve wherever. You hand it over. Okay, I'll take the science labs turf field. Laura's going to handle the facilities, capital maintenance requests, and I think we're there.
So for capital needs assessment, are we having any slides?
Well, yeah, I mean, we need, I think that summary one that you put up that he did, like we think.
Eighteen.
You want eighteen?
Yeah, okay. And then Laura and I are going to, we'll summarize.
Okay.
Public versus deliberative.
So, I have a fundamental just a question.
Yes.
You might have, it's important to stop at the end of the budget discussion.
Important to watch for the other warrant article.
All of our holes, and then from a comment by the time. The budget is in one of them, they get on a comment.
And if you start moving down the road, then you have to.
That's, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
You're saying add a question on the slide after each one.
Well, no, I don't know if he wants to do multiple ones.
Well, definitely after operating, we want to both stop it and do question answers after we operate the budget. When it's to operate.
I can think of questions if you're ready, and that way I'd separate the science lab from the turf field, because those are truly different question groups. In which case, if someone gets me a picture slide of football, I'm minded.
We have to bring the ball, the football up.
So then. So then the, the question is, when it comes to deliberative, will you, Mike or Adam or somebody do an intro of just seeing the school in some way for just a couple minutes? I should have Mike, ask him if you have anything to say for deliberate, not public.
We always try to lead on it with two things, strategic vision, a good new summary on why this is a good school, based on the good stuff that's happened in the last year. Typically, you ask the principal to be there.
That's what I was, that's what I was thinking, is I'm like, should we ask? Why? So maybe I'll read that one, or. Yeah, not long. Yeah, there you go.
Ben is there with two starts.
Yeah.
I think maybe last year we talked about, it's successful, we got antibiotics, many participants, we have all the different athletes that received investor review on five workers.
It might be good to have the highlights of how much better things are conceived here. I mean, that's some good, some of the things that, as far as getting housework, that he didn't realize he needed to do that, it's not glamorous, but I think it puts us in a stronger place.
No, Murphy's.
I think that it was meaningful in the, in the workshop when we had a discussion on why another nominee would be justified, to know how much evaluation burden was, was missed in the past and was falling onto the current group of, who were doing that job. I don't know if I can relate to that in there, unless I want to.
Well, let him pick out some of the important things that he's seen from the school, as a thing for the school.
Well, ambition, future.
Ambition and future.
The ambition is a great experience.
Yes. Okay, so are we comfortable where we stand? The question I have. Any questions? I'm done here.
I remember one needing to add to the couple Q and A.
Public hearing is a subset.
So yeah, so we need a republic hearing, is there? After work, so I know, that's why I kinda wanted to try and wrap the deliberative presentation into this as well, to try not extend the public hearing.
The public hearing is done, the board can vote right then, we all got stuff to do in session, and decide if we need tweaks to it into the presentation, and if there's a major constitution gag, we can schedule.
Not instead of. If there's something major. Do we have a meeting when we have the, she was being discussed on the 12th, I thought it was like five to seven. That's the public hearing, it starts at seven, or is it supposed to go to nine? That was, right?
Yes, yes, you're at seven.
Yeah. Yeah, we. This is, this is the tricky part, is if there are things to discuss in January, I mean, if we have our public presentation, if we wanna continue having a meeting about any outstanding issues, we can, or do we schedule a separate meeting with one more at a late, or we gotta figure, I need to look to see what issues are outstanding still.
Having our review this morning, there's, we have a decent working schedule for February after the deliberative session, so there's nothing pressing in the world where it has to be done in January outside of public hearings. But if there's other things you can sort of.
We can, yes.
It's definitely, we did give the two policies back from legal, which is.
Yes.
Nice to share, and I would want to have a first reading of those in January.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna, at least ask for discussion, those two policies.
To the 12th?
To the 12th. And I'll go through and look at our list and see if there's anything that is off the top of my head, I don't know, but I don't have a, what should we need to, I don't have anything. Yeah.
There's also a proposal in community council that I think the board should have this like discussion about, but has to do with giving lack of honors and different awards at graduation to students.
For the community council update.
Yeah, just like, it wouldn't be a long thing.
Okay.
But it should provide a process, and give feedback to the community council.
Is there a good proposal yet, and we can give a lesson in advance, if we're prepared to have that decision?
Okay. We will get an agenda out for that.
Those policies are already on the agenda. Just verify, the loss.
Adam, will you, wait, we are meeting in our, sorry, our meeting is on the 21st of February, that was just.
Oh, in February?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. If there's anything that comes up that you think needs to be discussed in January, please email me, because we'll be planning out that agenda, we'll make sure it gets out in time. Okay? Any other things? Any done? And.
So.
Yes.
So for comments and any questions, I, can we maybe set a deadline for this to come to me?
Yeah.
Right.
Right, so I'll have to be ready for.
Can we do that, can everyone have a, anyone who's doing part of the presentation say the board can see if there's changes to the move?
Uncertain, maybe some of that to the fact.
It's probably how they answer.
Yeah.
We, so we can. Okay.
I think we, then we should probably do a time to meet, so.
Yes.
Make your calls.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
In this live version, you have.
Yep, you can, don't want to watch me work.
So, I have a visit, it was typically a brilliant, powerful presentation. Is that, you still want me to do that?
Yes, please.
I'm gonna light your.
I have a little one, I always put it in batteries. No one ever wants to touch it, though, so I don't know why. I, I was going down the day on to do it, because I have to see what happened. Is that a first?
Or a demonstration?
Right, for the faculty?
The only reason I would bring two DVD's in case one didn't work.
Adam, do you know the setup this year is going to be where we're sitting in our own stations again?
It's up to you.
Last year, are we going up to.
I would assume the tables in front of the stage, like we've done once.
And then that'll be a podium, that was speaking.
Correct.
Okay. Set out last year, we were all sitting in our own little stations.
Yeah, well, that, we did that, but two minutes. Adam likes to avoid connecting with the audience, I think.
Well, I, no, I really like the big projector screens, so that it's conceivable presentation.
That's a second reason, the projector, but the last, I heard it was projected, we did, we're working on a rented.
You can't have people all show up for a presentation, and they're sitting in that and not see anything, so. So therefore, do we need to increase our technology budget?
Exactly.
But that doesn't mean cheap, but we're. Well, I know. We're not gonna get one by February.
Capital needs assessment.
Your expectations are high, I remember going to these meetings, AMS gym, and using an old version, oh, I do, you can go back. And, and they went through the budget, line by line.
If someone's sitting there writing that with a marker too long.
No. Anyway, so the pictures of the project, so it was, you know.
Yeah.
Forty lines or two lines.
But it was pretty transparent.
Yeah.
And it's the right transparency, so it sounds in your copy.
Yes.
You are way overdue.
Okay. All right, Zedik, everybody, is there another, anyone in the public for the second public comment section? Anyone like this? No? Okay, that is it for the evening, thank you everybody for taking your comments and your help.